We are streaming and recorded.
Okay, we will call the Italian Village Commission meeting to order for today, July eighth, twenty twenty five. The next business meeting will be July twenty ninth, twenty twenty five at one 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 North Front Street, Second Floor, two oh five. And that's Monday, Tuesday, August twelfth, twenty twenty five, four P M, one 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 North Front Street, Second Floor, two oh four. Staff, if you raise your right hand, state your name for the record.
Sophie Bobble.
And you promised all the best your ability this afternoon and evening.
I do.
Excellent, thank you. With the introduction, we'll start at the end of the process, introduce yourself, please.
Krala Tra.
Jeffrey.
Heska Wensky.
Jason City.
Jordan Stowe.
And we do have a plug for on.
Not staying.
Okay, great, so let's do staff approvals. Let's start on page three of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve staff approval applications? And a second? All in favor? I opposed. And I'll go through for extensions, seven, seven, four Hamlet. Eight, seven, four North High. One thirty eight East Third. Three seventy five East Fifth. Any extensions on any of those? Nope, okay. Motion carries. I don't remember this time, it's like I don't have my hand to approve the minutes from last month. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meetings, June tenth, twenty twenty five?
So good.
And a second? All in favor? Opposed, no extensions. All right, motion carries, thank you. Are they ready to start? So anything else about the agenda today that we need to know before we jump in?
Not that I can think of.
Alright, sounds good. Well, we'll start with number one, which is one, one, four, four North High Street. C O A two by zero, zero, five, oh, seven. Oh, doesn't look like he is here. Okay, we will skip that one then. And we will go to three forty five East Second Avenue, C O A two by zero, zero, five, ninety.
So this is a request for action for exterior alterations and landscaping. Landscaping to enlarge the opening for the doorway in the space of a previously closed opening to accommodate fire code requirements. Is that better?
Yes, perfect. Um, let me get the, let me get the sworn in real quick and then we'll jump back. Can we, had you raised your right hand, state your name for the record?
This is the opposite way around. So we have the landscaping and exterior building alterations as number two. And then number three, we have all signage.
Oh, are you here for signage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought you said three forty five.
They have the same address. So we're gonna actually ask you to just wait a second, cause we're gonna knock and I'll be, uh, we're gonna knock off the other. Alright, folks. They're in common, so we're gonna go. Once we get you seated, we'll have to get you sworn in. So now if you can, each, each raise your right hand, state your name.
Shalil.
I'm a full in the full name.
Oh, Shalil Johannes.
Abram Radcliffe.
And you promised all the truth in your testimony, best your ability this afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hear from staff and then we'll be back to you.
This is a request for action for exterior alterations and landscaping and landscaping. To enlarge the opening for the doorway in the space of a previously closed opening to accommodate fire code requirements. The current door opening is thirty two inches wide, rather than the required minimum of thirty six inches. To replace the concrete patio area and install a floor and landscaping per specific documentation. And to paint the previously painted masonry with shown Williams S W seven, zero, zero, eight alabaster. The step analysis include the summary of any previous review. At the July business meeting, commissioners had the following feedback. Commissioners noted that they do not have any concerns with enlarging the opening or completing the new French doors. The commission asked if the applicant could provide details on any lighting that's to be proposed to the patio. The commission asked for details on the species of plants proposed for the landscaping of patio. And further detail on the landscaping and landscaping proposed. Commissioners also noted that typically trees do not survive well on planted boxes, so trees, so tree wells in the ground will be preferable to house proposed upwards. Commissioners inquired about the proposed new concrete patio space and how the plan, if not three inch. It was noted that that reinforcements will be important for the strength of the patio and that it would be preferable to have some permeability to the surface to allow the groundwater absorption. If the ADA ramp is needed, commissioner already noted that the current setting grid there may not be enough to satisfy some of the code requirements. And asked the applicant to check if that management would be sufficient. The commission noted that if there needs to be an interior storm panel on the windows, and this panel should not interfere with the pattern of the buttons on the exterior. The commission wants to put the French door, I think a similar mounting pattern to the window, or a full light door. Um, the application has been updated to reflect the commission could be back on landscape. H B O staff noted that the current building on the site is historically contributing building appearing to have been constructed in the early eighteen fifties. Due to this fact, staff are asked for the window restoration and enlargement of door openings to accommodate the new French doors. As the door is in the space of a previously much larger door opening. Additionally, staff note that the imitation I V that is proposed is not supported by the short line design guidelines on patios and outdoor dining. And city code section thirty one sixteen dot thirteen standard for certain improvements. Um, that the climbing plans would not be supported against masonry buildings. Uh, short line design guidelines of exterior masonry, even if they were not artificial ones. Um, as you say, that landscaping should be planned several feet away from the foundation walls. And as such, staff do not support the use of climbing or artificial plants. Staff recommendation is approval of application C O A two five zero, zero, five, nine, eight with the following conditions. That further permeable landscaped area is as it's the patio space. And that the imitation I V is removed from the application. And the basis for this recommendation is thirty one sixteen dot eleven standard for alteration numbers one, two, three, five, six, nine, ten, and twelve. Um, thirty one sixteen dot thirteen standard for standard for certain improvements, A. The short line design guidelines on commercial patios and outdoor dining and private property. And that is all.
Sounds good. On a technical question, I cannot, once again, I have somehow managed to back up, lost all of the documents. What folder am I supposed to be looking?
Back up.
Look at that. It's like now I've suddenly, I think it's mysteriously gone.
I did that last time, basically, if you have to close it and then.
There we go.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Oh, hold on.
Okay, so let's hear from the applicant. What would you like to tell us?
We see the vines, that's no issue. That was kind of the last second idea.
Yeah.
Just try to add some look to that, because the building's a little older.
Yeah. She pretty much said it better than we will ever say.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's pretty much everything. We are adding more landscaping later. She did say she wanted more of that, so we're fine with putting the drainage still around the ends with the gravel. But that's.
Along with our planters, the three trees, the planters and the full perimeter. Not on the building side, but like you said, several feet away, starting in along the fence on the border of the outside of that patio.
Gotcha, so how many feet were you proposing for along the fence for the?
Like three feet about?
And then, um, and then you were going to do permeable areas around the tree plantings as well?
Yes.
Do you have an idea how big that might be?
Um, it should stay on there from the architect, I apologize.
There's somewhere to.
And there's three of them.
Okay, um, let's hear from, let's hear from, oh, I guess, and then, I'm sorry, I missed it, I was just switching profiles. Staff, you're okay with the full light door?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Um, alright, so let's hear from everyone, Kelly, you have the box on this?
I can start. Um, so I just want to, uh, clarification, Sophie, is this considered their landscape class?
Um, at this point in time, yes, the commission would like to see an update to landscape, landscape plan, we can take that to a subcommittee. If that would be preferable.
And just because typically we call out species, you're calling out ornamental tree, so we just want to make sure that that's a plant that's going to live and fulfill what you need. So I think we could do that as a subcommittee or staff could approve it, something like that. But I did notice that you guys are calling these three trees, which, thank you for putting those on, and the opening is drawn much smaller. But I saw the note said six by six, six by six is probably even a little larger than you need, but it's definitely not as small as what's drawn on there.
Okay.
So five by five, something like that is, is fine.
Okay, perfect.
I would, and you don't have to really do this one, but depending on the tree that you, um, uh, select. Some ornamental trees grow way out, they're gonna be something that people can run into and poke their eye in, that kind of thing. Shade tree, and they're about fifteen to twenty feet tall, and the shade tree is thirty, twenty five to forty feet tall, is gonna give you shade.
I think we did call it out in there, it's like a European something, it should stay inside, I apologize. They're a European.
Hornbeam?
Yes, that'd be right.
Okay, that's fine, those are upright trees and they're not really small ornamentals, so.
Okay.
But that's just why we need species, so we just need to make sure that somehow that is clear.
With that, we'll do a little list of what their trees are gonna be. Okay.
I would say you don't need a three foot wide gravel space, trying to save you some money.
Yeah, thank you.
If that was two feet, that's probably gonna be fine, um, for doing that. I would also say this could be a staff approval, they are doing amazing things with fake plants now. So, but you have to bring us a sample, you could see why we wouldn't approve that, that we would need to see it. And I think it would look really nice on the wall, but you just, you know, we can't say yes without knowing exact, you know, seeing it, knowing.
Which one it is?
Yeah, it could be cheap, it could blow away in the wind. I said it could be cheap, it could blow away in the wind.
Well, if you attach it to a piece of trowel or something on the wall, you're getting the same effect, but not having to worry about taking care of it. So I think you just have to give us more information before we say no off the bat on that. I was also curious, because if this is going for approval, a lot of these construction details aren't adequate. Um, like the ramp has to have what's called a turned down slab, so that if concrete gets below a certain dimension, it's just gonna crack. And so there's some things that they do where they thicken that slab.
Yeah.
Are these considered construction documents?
We're not.
So they actually would rather raise the level of the patio space than push front end. Um, as staff, we don't have an opinion either way. On that, so that's up to the, up to the permission.
Okay. It's something you might ask your contractor about, just because you don't want things to be cracking. And, and I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about where they were showing a ramp, but maybe that was just the existing ramp.
That was the existing, we were just showing two options in case the staff, in case you guys wouldn't approve bringing it up to grade level, since it dips in right now.
This one, but you said you're using, uh, welded wire fabric or some kind of.
Yeah, we are.
For sure.
An structural engineer took a look at it and, yes, he already did and said we were gonna cover it down with a vapor barrier or on top and mesh with rebar as well. With the higher fire P S I.
Sure. Okay. That's it, I'm just, I can't mind. If I think, if I see something else, I'll, and you want to. That's it.
Joey, thoughts?
Um, just to clarify, we finished four and our own surfaces are roughly the same level then? Based on.
Upon us pouring at six inches.
Okay.
We will be in line with the doors and the parking. When you walk in. Which is the entry right now.
Um, based on occupancy, you're probably gonna need some sort of egress gates, you guys have that?
Um, so there is egress gates on the existing there that, um, that will correlate, that correlate fine occupancy. It's just currently the building itself that has an issue. Yeah, there's, there's two already on there.
Okay, they're just not shown at the.
They should.
I guess.
Let me see, one should.
So explain, but I can see the, says escape homes.
And towards the.
I got you.
Yeah, and one on the bottom there.
I thought those were five of the issues, just making sure that we're finished flush and we've got enough egress in town and floor.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, and then I believe our staff mentioned this, but the only thing would be, um, the lighting, it looks like it's just kind of existing to remain as far as the wall lights section.
Yeah, yes.
And then is there any, is there any current existing lighting in the like parking area? Or is all, um.
You know that answer?
Just unfortunately.
I believe there's lights in the parking, because there's businesses there, so I believe there's street lamp ones that are, yeah, that are throughout there.
Okay, and I guess since it's all there, so existing to remain.
Yeah, different, correct.
Got me with that question.
Yeah, but just my comments.
No, no, just a moment.
Yeah, it's the same here, um, you know, I think when you're going through there and, uh, you could ask whoever it is that's gonna do the installation of landscaping. Or, you know, I don't know if you need to go any further into a subcommittee situation. Commissioner Truck could certainly help you, just make sure that when you open, you know, create those openings for the trees, you may need to amend that soil, because it's a good chance it's all junky compacted. Stuff that's not gonna hurt your trees very well, so you're probably gonna need to.
Switch it up.
Yeah, you're gonna need to create a larger, uh, area of new soil under there and you gotta figure out from, you know, I was doing your field. What, what you need to put in there, make sure those things are thriving. It's already gonna be a hot environment, so. Okay, so with that, um, are, uh, Kelly, are you okay with that as shown, or would you like to have a, a later subcommittee review, the specific species that we think?
Well, there are plants along the building, I think it wouldn't hurt, are those called out? I see them drawn, but.
Uh, they're boxwoods. They should say they're, they're like an urban species right there.
This is page fifteen.
Uh, because some were drawn as tall pyramidal and this could be boxwood. Looking for the page number on here, what about a sheet number versus a page?
Just.
Page one.
So it's just saying.
This is page one?
Or eight.
That's boxwood.
Everyone has all the.
Okay.
Let's just have you send something to staff.
Okay.
Instead of just call, because they're drawn as two different plants, but they're called all out of spots, so it's, it's possible, but just let us know for sure.
Okay.
What you're thinking, and you also, we ask you to say the size of the plant that you're going to fill in, so there's a big difference between a tiny little tree and.
And a little big guy.
Three or four inch.
So landscape plans are staff with, uh, species and caliber size, is clarified?
Caliber sizes for the trees and just heights for the shrubs.
Sounds good. Uh, you got that, Seth, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Okay, any other, um, comments, questions? Alright, and just for the record, clarify, why don't we just say, um, uh, minimum of two up to three foot, um.
Gravel.
Uh, permeable edge, I guess, that way, give more flexibility.
Thank you so much.
And then we'll say minimum of five by five up to six by six, but three openings, okay, you all have stability on that.
Thank you.
And with that, we have anybody that was willing to take a motion?
You tell me the number?
It is, I'll do the, I'll start that for you, C O A two five zero, zero, five, eight, seven.
I move, we approve zero, zero.
The C O A two five zero, zero, five, eight, seven.
As stated, or as presented with the following conditions, um, that, uh. The trees and other landscaping is sent to staff with the sizes and, um, species of the plant material defined. Were you okay with the lighting?
Yeah.
Okay, wait, mix up the number there, you're in the first one. Oh, you're right, I didn't, hold on, you're right, oh man, this is killing us, okay. Just write that number, it is C O A two five zero, zero, five, ninety eight. And is the only one, like, almost exactly the same? So five ninety, this is different, yes, now we got it, so messing up the entire operation here, okay, thank you, appreciate the correction. Alright, Seth, do you have that corrected, C O A?
Yes.
Alright, and we've got the motion, so all in favor? I opposed. And a standing, great, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, I'm messing everything up. Okay, let's try this again.
You have a motion?
Oh, you have.
Yes?
Okay, I move, but you have.
No, that's good, just, all you have to do is say yes.
Yes.
So, okay, and a second? All in favor? I opposed and standing, okay, now. Took a minute, you're good.
Oh, we're good now, alright.
You're awesome, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
We're just gonna stick the same site that we're doing earlier, it's before, I was saying, um, a different C O A number, I'll read that one here just a second. So sir, I think you are now officially. Alright, now we'll get you settled in here, this, this one is C O A two five zero, zero, five, eight, seven. Uh, if you'll raise your right hand, state your name for the record.
Uh, Colin Brinkman, if they had signed.
Okay, and you promised all the truth in your testimony, best your ability this afternoon?
I did.
Excellent, yeah, start with staff and be right back.
This is a conceptual application for signage to install a new non aluminumated ground sign to the parish's cemetery church. Sign is to be five feet tall, face of the sign to be tall by five feet wide. The sign face to be aluminum composite material, additionally printed by the lettering logo. Um, and the post to be four by four aluminum. And at the July business meeting, commissioners had the following feedback. Commissioners requested H B O staff to check the minutes and notes from the previous ground sign. Um, that wasn't sold by parish church. Commissioners noted that they could support a variation of the sign that was placed closer to the church building. And the commission noted that some simple sign changes to have darker supports creates closing effect. And that some depth to the lattery will be an improvement. Additionally, lowering the height of the sign and planting landscape are on base with favorable to the commission. H B O staff found that the ground sign is a reference sign to a previously installed in twenty fifteen without commission approval and subsequently, subsequently taken down. Later in twenty fifteen, a C O A was issued for a sixty square foot wall sign, which is larger than the short line design guidelines recommendation for wall signs. This larger wall sign was approved based on the building setback from the street and based on previously approved signage for this property. The applicant has updated the proposal based on commission of feedback and is now proposing a four foot tall ground sign with raised graphics and block posts. The sign is still being proposed in the same location for visibility purposes. Um, staff also verified that that portion of the site does belong to the parish.
Got you, got you.
Um, staff recommendation is that the commission should offer design feedback that can be used by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review of future I V C meeting. And the basis for this recommendation is city code session thirty one sixteen dot thirteen standard for certain improvements, C. And the Italian village guidelines on appropriate signage and graphics for the ground signs and short line design guidelines on grounds. The application package as well.
Great, any other thoughts before we turn over the outcome?
Not for me?
Okay. Are we?
Um, yeah, so I submitted the revised one, yeah, there you go. So according to my client, they've had a lot of, you know, issues with people driving past their driveway. Turning into the neighboring parking lot, turning around at the dead as street. So their main, their main issues on second, according to them. Uh, and they're, they're just hard to find back there, tucked back there behind some sort of industrial building, it looks like, I'm not totally sure who this is, but. Just a lot of visibility issues and then also just traffic flow to an extent, I mean, the parking lot right after, it's like twenty feet away. But yeah, it has been an issue of people finding your location easily, um, just because it's tucked back there quite a bit, so. Um, there's something small, something just an identifier, what their entryway is to their parking lot. Um, so there is one, some of the basic, not illuminated, but you know, something permanent, like the real estate signs they've had in the past that. Something they put up with approval, but, uh, yeah, just, just something there, just for visibility and just trying to connect with the community, they got a lot of apartments across the street and. According to them, they don't think a lot of people knows that they're there, I don't know. Um, but yeah, basically the main thing is just people missing the driveway, turning around and then just more visibility. Um, a lot of people don't really know they're back there, tucked back there behind the, the industrial building and whatever's to the right of them, but. Yeah, that's, that's mostly the case for it, and I did mention moving it back, but by moving it back, they do lose visibility when you're driving east on second, because the further back you go, you're gonna have blockage from that building to the left of them there in that photo. So we tried to, you know, set it back fifteen feet, like city code requires, but get as close to that fifteen feet as possible. And as far as landscaping goes, um, I haven't, I mentioned it to them, but we're not landscapers, so I'm not totally sure if they have plans for that or not, but I did mention that to them.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so just to frame us up a little bit, because, you know, we've taken a look at that site since the business meeting, um. Yeah, it, this is, it, this is an on premise sign because of the weird shape of a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it actually definitely is on premise, so that makes it a lot, um, less problematic for us, because off premise sites, signs.
I wouldn't be here if it was.
Become an issue. Become a big issue. So, um, you know, from that perspective, if you need to set back requirement of signage, then, you know, from just a physical absolute, you know, uh, uh, basically being allowed to do this. And then, you know, I know that we talked earlier and, and staff went through the, the old notes with regard to, you know, a little, a little bit larger signage package based on the fact that it's a large building and it's in a weird location. I'm not too worried about this setting a lot of precedent, because there's a lot of other sites like this in the village, so from my perspective, that, that eases the location and the type of sign, others may feel differently. Uh, however, I think it would be, um, uh, additive both for, uh, the church and I just think for the overall, um, approach. If we're gonna allow this type of sign, which really doesn't fit into our overall guidelines, then they have some sort of a landscape. Element around, doesn't have to be anything very extensive, I mean, it could be, um, you know, could be pranials of some sort, it could be, you know, whether that would be shrubs or whether that would be, um, something that's more like what is just around the corner at the Ohio Library. To truly just down second, it's quite at second and sixth, they've got a little corner thing and they just have bulbs and whatnot planted in there.
Got you.
Something, it's still not overwhelming, it's just a way that it, it justifies us saying, yeah, it's okay to, in certain circumstances, to do these kind of signs, because really they're not.
Yeah, for sure.
Typical guidelines, so that's my take, um, let's go down, uh, the, the line and see what other folks think. Paige, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, um, I agree with what has already been said, and I think if there, um, is a chance to do some landscaping around the sign to, like you said, make it feel a little bit more appropriate, having this sign typology in the area.
Yeah.
There's also, I see, like, right beyond those, there's a kind of a mechanical equipment pad.
Yeah.
Could, um, kind of, uh, uh, be helped with some landscape shielding there too, so.
For sure.
Um, something to think about if the owners, they said it that.
Okay.
I think adding some landscaping will go along with it, I think it might be adjusted the height slightly, either up or down based on the selected species.
Okay.
So you have proper clearance.
Yeah, for sure.
Something really gonna, for me, be dependent on what the landscaping would look like on the pile platters.
Got you.
Great, Kelly, what do you think?
As the landscaper, architect and architect, I will say you should not plant pranials, sorry. Because it's just gonna be bare again in the winter, but if you did something super simple, like three or four sea green juniper or something similar to that. You're gonna have a nice two to three foot high, um, plant, you'll probably find smaller species, I think you can submit that to staff.
Okay.
And they could approve the plant, um, that you select, but then you're gonna have something that stays low, kind of fountain, uh, form to it. And, um, won't cost a lot of money either.
Got you, would you guys want it just in the front, or would you want it?
I think with that, you could just put it on, kind of, you know, push them back into the, uh, posts a little bit.
Okay.
Just put it on one side, it'd probably be fine.
Okay.
Cause they, they spread out.
Got you.
Is that okay, Jason?
Sorry, with me, sounds great, you, or Paige, you have something?
Yeah, sorry, forgot, is this a double sided sign?
Single.
Oh, okay, is the back just, um.
So the back would just be, the way this is drawn, um, it's just panels mounted to the post, and then on the backside, you have the exposed post on the back end.
But they're all finished and like. But they're all finished and, like, the posts are finished black and the signs finished white, or how is that word?
So the post, everything will be black on the post and then just the panel is just white, on the front and back of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it'll just be plain white?
Correct.
Is, is it possible that could be black as well?
Yeah, we, I mean, we could paint the backside black and just have the face be white if that works.
That'd be much better, it'll just go away, rather than being a blank white.
I almost thought you were just tall landscape.
We could. Or should it be, add some, uh, grasses behind it? But maybe it's. It'll be fine.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good thoughts.
Um.
Okay, um, so, uh, is this something we feel we can make conditions and that you're okay with?
This is just the conceptual right now, so if we would like to move it to action, we would have to do a separate motion to move this from conceptual to an action item and then we can make a motion.
I mean, I'm okay with that, what about the folks then? Okay, so can I have a motion to move this from conceptual to an action item, COA two five zero zero five eight seven? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, so now it's an action item, so now, uh, would someone care to make a motion of this approval?
Yes, thank you. Um, motion to approve COA two five zero zero five eight seven, um, with the conditions that, um, some additional landscaping information. Is it, are we gonna do staff's approval?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, be sent to staff surrounding the, the post signage.
And, uh, uh, Carla, can you add the suggested type of?
I would say if you share numbers that number, but, uh, forty six low evergreen shrubs, um, are planted at the base of the sign.
And you had one potential recommendation?
And sea green junipers are a little bit larger, um, but you might just check out your heights against the height of the sea green juniper.
Gotcha. Paige, do you accept that in your, in your motion?
Yes, except that, and with the additional condition that the back of the sign will be green black.
Excellent, okay, do I have a second? All in favor? I'm opposed, standing, statues, alright, sounds good. You're approved, good luck.
Scott, is he?
Yeah, thanks, okay.
Do the commissioners have a maximum height that they would?
I mean, ask her, I think ask her the, the sign.
The sign.
Yeah.
Five.
Yeah.
Is, is the last one probably ten feet? Between five and ten feet is the, a lot?
Five and ten?
Between four and five, I think.
Yes. Yeah, it's half, half, half drawn, yeah, submitted. I don't want to technically sign that for shooting. Put a basketball backboard on the backside of it. Okay, sounds great. Um, okay, so moving on with can, uh, our next conceptual application is two forty six, the second additive.
Alright, great.
Come on up when we get you introduced. This is COA two five zero zero five seven one. And if you will please raise your right hand, state your name for record.
Catherine Lexring.
And you promise to hold truth in your testimony, that's true ability this afternoon.
I did.
Okay, hope you have one more question?
And more guy, yeah.
No worries, sorry about that. What an analysis. Alright, uh, can you raise your right hand, state your name for the record?
Andrew Thompson.
And you promise to hold truth in your testimony, is that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
This is a conceptual application, oh, my mic's on. Conceptual application for exterior building alterations to remove the existing steel portico. And replace with a forty inch to forty four inch wide black smooth metal awning. With a projection of twenty four inches per the submitted documentation. Alternatively, the applicant has let me know in the past week. But, um, they would also like to consider just removing the steel portico completely from the face of the building. Um, to replace the damaged siding on the east and north elevations with southern yellow pine tongue and roof siding to match the existing. To replace the trim with borrel smooth trim per the submitted documentation. And to repaint the siding and trim, to paint the siding with bear paint M five ten dash seven eight. And to paint the trim a combination of bear PPU two six dash one three silent white. And bear S four two zero dash six pine boards. The staff analysis is at the July business meeting, commissioners have the following feedback. The commission asked for clarification on why a different material is being proposed for the trim compared to the siding. Commissioners noted that they would support the trim being replaced with southern yellow pine. And the commission noted that the proposed awning is not appropriate to replace the current steel portico. HPO staff note that mixing materials between the trim and the siding is not appropriate. I recommend that the trim be replaced with either cedar, cedar or southern yellow pine to match the existing. Additionally, the applicant would need to provide a cut or project sheet for the, for the proposed replacement door that is noted on their documents. HPO staff do not support the removal and replacement of the existing steel portico with the proposed replacement black metal awning. And any replacements should match the existing in siding materials per the Italian Village Guidelines and City Code. And the staff recommendation is the commissioners should offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review of future IVC meeting. And this is based on City Code Section thirty one sixteen to eleven, standard for alteration, numbers two, five, six, ten, eleven and twelve. And the Italian Village Guidelines on porches. And on body of the house wood siding.
Okay, great, thanks. Very, over to you, uh, tell us about which one do.
So I, I can start, yeah, so there's damaged sections of the siding that just need to be replaced. And then the awning referred to is actually on the back of the house, so it's over the back stairs. Um, it was attached to the siding and is starting to peel off, so it's really, um, wasn't properly structurally mounted right the first time.
So wait, so it exists already today?
It's like a wood awning.
A wood?
Yeah, it's like wood and has shingles on the top, um.
So like a gable pitch angle.
Fifteen, I gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Is that a little?
Level's paid, so.
So, yeah, so it's like a metal frame thing?
Yeah, it's like a metal frame that was painted, I guess, to match and is, like, as you can see there, was attached to the siding and starting to pull away.
Yeah, that's.
And I think in your opinion, probably just too heavy for how it's mounted.
It's a big, it's got the asphalt shingles on it, it's just too much weight, it's just pulling off of the structure.
Yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, it's a little bit of a DIY situation at one point. Okay, um, so, um, so staff, you didn't have any, and no, you had no question about the siding itself, correct?
No question about the siding.
So, could you explain to us your thinking about doing the trim in a different material?
Yeah, there's, um, I'm just limited because the look of the house, it's a, it's a smooth, it's a smooth home, so like you can get, uh, so I just brought some samples. So with the, all the wood products. You can either get it in rough sawn or smooth, okay? And so, the issue with all of the, like, off the shelf items, including like the cedar that you get at any local lumberyard. It's not graded for the smooth side, so painting stain has a really hard time adhering to the smooth side, okay, of this particular grade. So this grade is called select tight knot, meaning it has knots in the board, okay? So, now, the rough sawn side, it is graded for the rough sawn side and all the knots are glued in on the rough side, okay? So, I don't want to install rough sawn lumber on her house because she has, uh, she has some old redwood on the house, five quarter. Uh, this original house, and it's all smooth, and I wanna try to match that as perfectly as possible, okay? So, the only redwood that I can get now, smooth redwood, is finger jointed material. And it's not bad material, but I, I, it drives me crazy that it's all finger jointed as opposed to just solid boards, okay? Um, and so, we started using the borrel product eight years ago, uh, to mimic the redwood. Uh, the product is, it's engineered to, to replicate redwood exactly. Uh, it does have a smooth face in it, uh, to replicate, uh, you know, clear redwood and vertical graying cedar. And so, I wanna use the borrel product on the house because, uh, it's, it's made to look exactly like old growth redwood. Um, it's smooth, it holds paint better, uh, than a, than like a traditional select tight knot board. And if we were to paint or stain, uh, this lumber on the smooth side, uh, you're gonna see the knots in the board. It's really just not the look of like a home that was, uh, that, that she owns, so.
Yeah, interesting, can you see the?
Sure. So, these are, that's a, that's non-painted, okay, that's the primed version, that's the pan version.
So, these images are really pixelated?
Right.
It's very interesting. Uh, so you're using a lap kind of siding?
The siding, yeah, the siding I can match perfectly, okay? So the siding, she has southern yellow pine, uh, tongue and groove, smooth face siding. I can match the siding perfectly, original, I mean, no, no issues with that. The issue is, is I can't get southern yellow pine clear trim with no knots, like, the southern yellow pine that's available, it's all gonna be knotty lumber and again, it's just not the look of, of the house, so.
Um, I mean, I'll, I'm gonna defer to the architects up here. You making compelling arguments, Tony? Interested to hear what's another folks say. Do you have any, uh, things?
I just, I just brought this to, we stock about five or ten of these profiles, just depending on the season.
Yeah.
And, um, so Borl's the same company that makes the trim, they actually mill these historic profiles out of that trim. Um, so we, you know, like I said, we stock five to ten depending on the season, so. But, um, anyway, the company, they take it very, very seriously, matching cells and everything, so.
Oh, that's interesting, okay.
So again, like, the only options that I can get for those historic details. You can get it in eastern white pine, which is really, really soft and it, it only lasts like five years on the exterior of the house. I can get PVC, and I like PVC because it moves around, uh, so really this is the only option, uh, again, in this day and age, so.
Maybe the question that I was asked is, you're matching the profile.
The profile's perfect, yes, yeah. For this, for the siding and the trim too, so, but like you said, the only difference is just it's a different material for the trim, but all the profiles and the distinctions are the same, so.
Okay, Paige, you go, what do you think?
Are the existing corner boards original or were those replaced?
You said the corner boards?
Yeah, it's a.
Let me, uh, can I airdrop something to you guys?
Yeah, there's some of them.
Okay, okay.
You can see the knots.
Yeah. So that is all, that has been repaired, my guess is somewhere within like the last five to ten years. And again, that's where the, the leaks and the issues manifest at the knots, because again, these products, they, they are not graded to be smooth application, they're all graded to be rough sawn, okay, so.
So, the, just to clarify everything, um, basically the trim of the windows and the corner boards. And I think that they should be using at the.
The bore product, yes. It's a, it's a, uh, the, like, all these houses, they do that, uh, tongue and groove and then they trim over top of it, so that trim has to come off to be able to replace the siding.
So, curious, what are you, unless you wanna, you're gonna keep going with that joke?
No.
I was just gonna say, what, you know, none of us, uh, were in favor of the metal roof.
That's okay, yeah.
You guys were that crazy about it either. What are you doing here?
So, all that siding and trim is coming off, okay?
And this then is, this is where the old, here, this is where the old, um, overhang was.
Correct.
That's the roof of the.
So that's, my question is, not, if you're not doing the metal.
Right.
Overhang, what are you doing?
Well, well, we're open to anything. My suggestion, uh, for the metal, uh, was, you know, one, it's just, it's, it's economical, okay? Because I can have that prefab been made, um, as opposed to having one of our carpenters spend a day and a half making one. Um, so again, that's, that's, that's more of a function of, like, hey, we're just trying to make it work financially for the whole project, okay? Now, I can build one, uh, much better than what she has, like, out of just, you know, two by six and, and shingles. But then we've gotta do something with the soffit, like, I can't just leave that plywood and just paint, it's just, again, it's not exterior grade. Um, so again, like, if, if she wants to have an awning and it's not metal, it's gonna raise the price to install a shingle over, uh, you know, attached awning.
And my concern is if, like, he builds something like what's there now, it's so heavy that that's what's starting to pull away from the house?
Something have a lesser structure on the side, that is, that's not gonna be an issue.
There's, there's, there's no, there's no, there's no bearing up base, okay?
No bearing.
Yeah, there's no bearing, so like, it's like concrete, concrete steps and. Yeah, well, there's, there's, there's concrete steps there, okay? But it's really not something that you can put like a six by six or a four by four to support.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's typical, I, I think once, I, I, you guys could tell me, typically it's a small wooden, uh, element, it would not be something like this. This is, this is, yeah, very abnormal.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of homes out of the village that are just a small, essentially, it's just a little. It's just, yeah, it's just to keep, keep your ice room, ice room warm and your back.
Yeah, right.
So it would not be heavy, it would be just a small piece that would have some kind of bracketing in order to make it cover that, but not create a giant porch feature, so.
Yeah, the frame.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you talking about a, like, shed kind of piece, or are you talking a gable kind?
I'm the.
Yeah, there's no, there's no pit, there's no, it's not a gable pitch, so it's. Yep.
Um, do you have a, a comment that you guys are interested in? Um, that insurance not having a covering of this back door?
I think at some point I'll need something, but if, yeah. Um, but if, like, the metal wasn't approved, I at least wanted to move forward with the siding portions of this and, like, the repainting, cause like, you can see, it's pulling away from the house, so it's damaged and needs to get replaced, um, sooner rather than later.
Okay.
For creates a bigger issue.
It's just nice to have something that you're.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you just decide to not have anything, that's certainly approvable. We can't force you to have anything back there. And so, do you wanna do that? That's fine. And if you want to add something, um, it would be wood and it would be, you know, simple and.
Okay.
More, and keep it simple, yeah, to help with historical context and staff can help you find some examples in the neighborhood.
Yeah, easy stuff.
Okay.
It's not fancy, believe me.
Unfortunately, it's pretty much.
I would just encourage you to put a frame in the wall as you're stripping off the siding.
No doubt, yeah.
That's the.
Yeah.
True, we didn't build it now.
Alright, great, yeah.
No problem.
Um, okay, so let's talk more about this, um, board interior, what are, what are the thoughts of the architects that, I mean, it's a. Are you compelled or is it just me?
Compelled?
It's a, it's a, it's a, for me, let me, I won't cut you off. For me, it's part, partially, in this, in this region, I can't get clear cedar, uh, or mahogany or old growth poplar or redwood. Um, that like crown profiles and trim is made out of on these houses, so I cannot source those materials. I have a supplier on the east coast that gets us those products if we're doing natural stain jobs. But ninety nine out of a hundred jobs have some kind of solid paint or stain on them. Um, and so, again, like, out of the, all the options that are available to us, really, like, in the Midwest. I can't think of one crown product or trim product other than the finger jointed redwood. That is his, more historically accurate than the borrel trim. And I get, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna affiliate it with the company I had been saying it. I'm just trying to get it as close to possible as she has, knowing that it's a different material, but still trying to replicate what she has, so.
Have, have we had other clients ask, is that this material?
Borl, yes. Um, typically, we don't encourage the mixing of materials because we don't know how the borl and the wood is gonna interact in the long term. Um, that's the, kind of the hesitation on mixing the materials from the staff side.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of that is, we feel comfortable using this as a, um, basically a test of this approach and having the applicant understand that. Um, you know, that is a consideration. I think the biggest issue is the fact that staff's in support of full removal of the siding because it's not historic siding, so. That makes it a lot easier for me because it's gonna be a completely new wrap of the house.
Well, I think part of that argument also is that, basically say that trim is, what, five or ten years old with southern pale? So I think that starts adding credence to the conversation. I think for me, it's, how's that detailed? Because I think to Sophie's points, you know, what is that long term connection really gonna look like? What is that interaction between wood and a sensitious product? I think, maybe what you need to do is prime and paint all of the edges that butt and maybe. Kind of create like an isolation point with caulk and lacquer on, maybe.
For, for which product?
Just where the borl hits the lap siding.
It's, uh, Borl's, uh, Borl's insulation guide calls for no priming of cut edges, cause it's not, it's not, it's not a product that absorbs water. Um, yeah, it's, it's a ground, it's a ground contact product, it's a roof contact product. Um, you know, it's a trim screw product, uh, it's, 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 I mean, I remember when it came out. Uh, architects in particular expected because they can match all the details on these houses perfectly, uh, with the profile. So it's, it's a, it's a. So it's, it's a, it's a very expensive product, um, so it's, it's, you know, like, I, I could airdrop you. Tons and tons of historic details are done with it, so.
Um, yeah, I mean, this is a conceptual review, so I think maybe if you can provide those to staff.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, hopefully, who knows, maybe we can, you know, get through this at our, at our business meeting next time, so. Um, are there other questions or thoughts that anyone has about the details in this? It sounds like you're trying to do the right thing, and, um, I think it'll, you know, and, and the direction you're heading is gonna try not to be a huge impetus.
Do you have one question? You said that you've done many historic details.
Yeah.
You've done entire walls of houses.
Yeah, that product, uh, that company, duration, uh, that's the mill shop for it. Um, we've done some one oh four with it, I've done some one oh five. Uh, tons and tons of crowd work, tons of arch cable work with it. So, again, it's very, it's very expensive, so most, most, most consumers are not replacing, like, half their house or their whole house. With the siding. I stock all of their trims, because normally people go with the one oh four, or just like the southern yellow pine, cause it is a good product. It's available at most lumberyards, uh, but again, because they don't have a smooth trim product to complement the southern yellow pine. It forces us to look at other, you know, other, other materials.
So if you can provide those additional materials onboard the staff, as well as contemplate what you wanna do with the rear portico. Um, then we should be able to, you know, move on this next month.
This is just the same email thread that we've been getting?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And the other thing that I would note is, I completely missed that the door was gonna be replaced in your application. I can send you, um, the page for the guidelines that have appropriate door styles as well.
Okay.
And then if you could just include that with the application.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Does it have to be a wood door? Is it, is it, is it, is it, is there, what are the, just quick, is it, is it steel fiberglass, or like, or either, like, what, what, what are our options?
That's a great question.
Yeah, and then, one of the.
I think there's prescribed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I can send you the, the guidelines.
Okay, very good.
This is the options.
Okay, good, great.
Okay, uh, we're not taking any actions since this is conceptual, we really appreciate you coming in.
Are the paint colors okay as well?
Yes, y'all have no issue with deciding the paint ones.
Okay.
It was just easy to break it, hellistically.
Yeah.
Oh, and I didn't even look at this, are you gonna do the blue, like, brush?
Yeah, like a navy, navy with a white trim.
Yeah, we go, okay.
I think it'll, hopefully, look fast.
Oh, look, boys, love it, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, patient A, uh, seven oh five, New Sixth Street, C O eight, twenty-five hundred, six five eight. Last person to eyes, has to like that. Alright, so you're ready to settle in, you raise your right hand, so we pay for record. Robert Harris, and cross told to your customers, that's true.
I do.
Okay, thank you, alright, I'll, 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 I'll.
So this is a conceptual review, a new construction, um, for the construction of two. Four-story apartment buildings with a separate parking lot, combination of previously garage. Exterior building finishes, with a brick, siding and hard to trap. The trim to be painted shell and lullians S L U seven five zero two, East End Ray. And the siding to be painted shell and lullians S L U seven zero three three, brown stone bronze. Proposed windows to be single hung vinyl windows, and all the windows, swallows be very light west doors. So I'll be wearing three, but it will pay a lot of cost to seal. All the lines to be, uh, some, finds a six-inch tall LED exterior wall surfaces. Um, KSL aluminum gurtis and dumbfels proposed. The site plan has been modified to move the building an additional eight feet from sidewalk. Um, for landscaping, the tree lawn from the sidewalk ranges thirteen feet to fourteen feet, to accommodate a lot of trees. Um, removes the curb cut from the site plan to reduce the number of parking entrances to one parking entrance. And the pocket park is to be constructed between the two buildings. A site plan was previously approved under the variance recommendation December twenty twenty-two, to have a road connection from Mont Six Street to Mont Four Street. Containing that connection was an important reason for the commission to recommend the variances and approve the design. The design was approved in October twenty twenty-three, with final approving, approval pending submission and approval of landscaping, lighting, signage and graphics. In September twenty twenty-four, the commission reviews a proposal to, um, change the site plan and install. Lighting, artwork and landscaping, and that site plan included removing the connector that was previously a reason for approval. The following is taken from the June tenth, twenty twenty-five, Italian Village Commission now approved, making minutes. Commissioner comments, um, it was clarified to the commission that the new site plan shows that the connector road would not be blocked. And that the footprint will be comparable to the Galleian Flats building to the north. Commissioner tried to appreciate the tree plan and clarified that this site plan, um, is not the final landscaping plan. She also noted that the importance of moving the trees closer to the parking is reduced to heat island effect. It was noted by multiple commissioners that detail in the massing, cross-sections and heights in comparison to neighboring buildings, as well as specifying materials as the next step in the process. Commissioner Plasky appreciated that the design is now broken up and scaled down from previous proposal. She noted that the brick detailing that had been previously discussed would be a positive addition to this, to this proposal. Um, additionally, the space between building A and building B should be designed to feel inviting for pedestrians. Commissioner Suri noticed that there was, um, a lot of success in the building to the north due to the building's proximity to the street. And allowance for a slightly larger tree lawn. He suggested thinning out other portions of the building to allow for more green space along Sixth Street and Warren Street. He also noted that augmented screening for parking light on Sixth Street would be preferred, as would, um, removing one of the two curbs. Since the previous conceptual review, multiple changes to the proposal have been made based on commissioner feedback. Including the expansion of a tree lawn and the inclusion of a pocket park between the two buildings. At the July business meeting, the commissioners have followed feedback. Commissioners asked for more detail on the landscape treatment along Sixth Street and encourage robust screening. Um, the commission asked if the design shown for the pocket park was defined on this site. The commission noted that the adjustments to the site plan and massing are a positive improvement. Commissioners asked for clarity on the window configuration in terms of grid pattern. It was noted that the additional trees, that additional trees should be planted in the parking lot, specifically the northern portion of the parking lot. The commission noted that the paths to the entry doors should be made wider to create a grander entrance feel. And there should be seating and other items of interest along the walkways to decrease the monotony of the sidewalk. Additionally, the sidewalk should be extended down the Sixth Street capacity line. It was asked if the engineering plan could be updated to reflect the agreement for the pavement removal. The applicant clarified that the asphalt removal is shown on the existing engineering plan. And that a landscape object will be involved to ensure that there will be a strong landscape buffer between the parking lot and Mont Six Street. That the entries to the apartments will be grander in scale and detail, and to design the pocket park. It was also clarified that the current proposal contains more parking lot trees than required by city code. And that the additional trees will reduce parking, um, and affect the applicant's program compliance. Staff recommendation is commissioners should offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review at a future I B C. And the basis for this recommendation is city code section thirty-one sixteen dot twelve, standard for new construction. Um, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I. Um, J, K, L, M, N, the Italian Village Guidelines on New Construction and Building additions. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and that is all.
Great, nice job, thank you, uh.
Nice. Very good. Um, first off, thank you very much for the comments from the last public meeting, and also the business meeting. We're able to incorporate all of those, we think they're great directions to the project. Especially the, um, major setback on the building itself and both the streets. Taking the two, um, interestways into the, um, parking lot, down to one. Um, putting trees into the middle part of the landscaping. Um, also the pocket park, that's a placeholder. We're gonna be engaging Pod, who did our park out in Jeffrey, as a landscape architect. And so they will, then run from this now, if you have any further comments, then they'll implement that, and you'll have a full landscape architecture plan. And then this is also showing the elevation, I brought the materials, because we wanna cut the architect loose and start doing more detailed drawings for it. And renderings, and then we wanna, um, land on our civil plan. So we can get that incorporated to the draw, the plan on that. And then the other thing would be Dave Perry, our zoning council, make sure we don't have any, a lot of little variance things floating out there.
Sounds good, um, so today, uh, you're, uh, thinking particularly, you're hoping to hear more feedback on with regard to the.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure so we could land off and do the whole, probably. They just wanna know if Daddy more comments.
Okay. Alright, um.
And I can show you the materials too.
Okay, that's great, so, uh, while you're, uh, for our materials, I just wanna clarify one thing, um, you said especially. Uh, the one thing I wanted to make sure was on the issue, and that they did not show pavement removal.
Ouch.
Yes, that's the point.
Okay, that was opposite what?
Yes, we do not want.
They not want to show that.
No, I mean, we basically wanna go back to what we had before, and so the engineering plan is not reflecting what your landscape plan or what your site plan is. We absolutely do not wanna show the pavement removal, I cannot be more clear on that. So if that was in the minutes that I approved them, I was erroneous, yes, that is a hundred percent, but holy, I got better now. We need to show that that still remains while we are going through the process of determining if that's going to be a future connection. And then as part of that, we need to show how that connection works in conjunction with the location. Of your trash pickup, which I believe it does looking at your landscape plan, but in your engineering plan, it interferes with that. So we have to get the engineering plan to match the landscape plan with regard to the site considerations. And one hundred percent have got to keep the pavement in the ground. You're not removing the pavement, we agreed that we went through a series of arduous meetings with numerous departments. To get everybody to agree that it's okay to leave it, so absolutely don't wanna take that home, so I think I made my point. Um, okay, um, so with that, let's see the materials you've got.
Can we go back to the elevations to all of the. I'll start because I'm sure you guys are gonna understand more. Um, I think you, you have a, a photograph of, of the existing building, or maybe it's a rendering.
Yes.
And I think that's, it's quite nice, and I feel like, um, e- even though the dark brick might be really nice. To me, this seems not as articulated as the other one. There's a darker kind of two-thirds of the bottom and then more happening at the top. And on this one, there's a little bit of that idea going on.
Hmm.
But it seems like there could be more variation on it, it feels monolithic. And I think that if they can just vary that some more like they did on the other ones.
Yeah, these renderings are very quick, two D renderings, not three D, and the color's not very accurate. And that's why I brought these materials, like, you want.
Well, and, and the materials might be fine, I'm just wondering about the extent, so.
Yeah, there's, the paint colors up here. And you can see, it's, it's a lot lighter than the building itself.
Yeah.
It's getting a little lighter, and then the black is introducing various windows.
And we've looked at the, the photographs on there, so, I mean, those look like nice colors.
Yeah, that's for other buildings.
But in this one, there's a continuous lighter kind of, um. And that, you know, is on the, the whole facade, and that's what I'm wondering, and we'll see what these guys think too. But it seems to me like we could use some more variation, just to make it a little bit, um.
We could do, um, the nature of the color, I think I wanna keep with, but in regards to the shading of it, we could go one or two shakes lighter. We wanted to go a little more gritty on this because the building directly north of us, that's at Warren and North, um, Fourth. Has, um, more hardy materials as opposed to this with a little more modern and elegant. But we can do, we can show you different, um, radiations.
Okay.
And that'll be shown better than the renderings, and not the flat two Ds.
Um, I'd like to see, I mean, that, that would be good to see, but I'd like to, uh. I'd like to picture this building around its, in its surroundings, and see what other materials are surrounding it. Cause I just, I'm just concerned that when you go back there right now, it's just all starting to look the same. Um, and so there might be a chance for this building, and I don't know if that's true right from this area. Um, you know, and I think that, like, we say it looks modern and nice right now, but in twenty years, are we gonna look at this all looking? Exactly the same, and.
Like, that was a mistake.
Um, and so I, I would just like to see what's around it, because I feel like this, I feel like I've approved this building five times. In, in the neighborhood, and I, uh, it's just concerning to me that it's all just one area at this point, especially at this height.
Um, that's what it adds more change to that, Ed Grandview Yard, it's exactly what you're talking about. They have everything, it's the same materials and two similar colors. And it's so different than their later, um, versions, you know, of development that they have where they have realized that. And they started adding more variations to what they were doing. So I think it's just our concern that it's, that doesn't happen here, that everything's too much.
Well, provide contextual, um, photograph, but directly north of this building, it's dramatically different. It's just that, um, mansion hits rough, it's, I mean, it looks like an eighteen eighties, um, letter house.
Yeah.
And then phase nine.
Uh, west of the building.
And phase nine, it's all modern, it's extremely modern, they're brought to a good, from modern to very traditional. And then this is kind of like a transitional in between.
Okay.
None of that.
And I'm thinking materials too, that's what we, that we need variation in materials, you know, that's great, and there's different styles, like, the texture.
Yeah, the one thing we do that is just on all projects is in regards to brick, so I could use a lot of pressure on the project, we think that way is a lot better. Than some of the other products that are out there that are not ours.
Did you maybe have the, just kind of Photoshop this into the context, so maybe just to add.
No problem.
I think with the left and right side elevations, they're appearing a little bit too flat. I think you go back to that one image, there's just that little pocket that says.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a really nice touch there, and then, um, with that, it looks like you have open boundaries there.
Um, integrated, resussed in.
Okay, on those left or right side, so those are, it's just an open breezeway then?
Open breezeway. Oh, you're talking about the ends?
Yeah.
The ends as well, yes, that's open breezeway.
And then you have storefront on the, for the main entrance?
Right, correct. And comment with maybe make that pathway larger, make it more prominent, and benches, different elements to break up the sidewalk, right down it.
So the, um, I guess for the material, in that open breezeway, it would just, then that kind of what's going on, which, you know. Semitish designing or.
Hmm.
So could be another material?
Pardon?
So if you're gonna have it go the same way.
Hmm.
That, that corridor, that pathway, is it just being semitish siding or?
Yes, party, we take party into that, and the building just directly north of this, it's the same open breezeway system, so I'll take a picture of that.
Yeah.
And show you how that came out.
Yeah.
So, Rob, would you consider putting doors on the first floor that's similar to the legacy buildings in the back of, where they have the open breezeway? But there's, there's doors on the first floor, so you feel like you're entering a building, or so, and it just sort of.
Oh, down on the, or, if you notice to the left of the top elevation at the front, there are doors out there. And then the other ones don't show doors because they're on the side.
Yeah, well, the, the side ones, the ones I was asking him, the side ones won't be on the side anymore, because they'll be. There's, one of the sides will be on six, the one of the sides will be on four, and on four, I hope you'll see as well as that.
Hmm.
Am I understanding that right?
I don't follow you.
So, there's two buildings, right?
Hmm.
So, on the one that is along Warren.
Okay.
On the ends of that, won't those be along the other streets, and are those carefully to be open as well?
Yes.
Yes, I guess that's what I'm saying, there's not, it's not really the back, it's on a public street.
Right.
Gives you a security issue.
Yeah, I mean, that, it happens on, in Legacy, even the back of them, back of the same development, there are doors on, on the breezeway.
Hmm.
So, I mean, I think, I, I think I'd like to see that, I think the open breezeway on the corner. That really, I think, diminishes the way that that feels like, uh, you know, a legitimate entrance to the building on six and on four. So, if we could think about the first floor having, I mean, really, just even that game we've already done, or the building in the back of them.
Hmm.
That one had to be in the middle. That one happens to be in the middle, but still facing toward a public street. So I don't see where it'd be really any different. You're still having a breezeway that has to go around it.
Jason, are you saying that you want the door to be flush with the front facade?
What I'm saying is on the left side and right side elevations, it appears to me now that on the first, on all of the floors, it's an open breezeway.
Yeah.
Right. And what I'm saying is I would prefer finishing door on the first floor.
Like this.
I, I can't see where that is, but yes.
Well, in our, this built, like, literally this building exists at cornelia's and six. It's a wrap.
Open?
Yes.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. And I wouldn't be as concerned if it was not on main right away, but I mean, six is, is rid of the front of this building for all intents and purposes because that's where the massive amount of the street furniture is going to be in.
So you're concerned the side elevation, it's on North Fourth.
And I'd say North Six.
And six. What we need to do is pick in regards to say that on North Six, North Fourth, it'll be a doorway system. And then the other building, it would be either the north or the south end of it. Because the way the open breezeways are, we have to have one area totally open.
Okay.
For breeze going through it.
Well, let's think about that then. It seems like the six elevation is probably gonna be.
And I'll take pictures of what we did over the building just north of this. We had the same situation.
I guess that's what I'm saying. This is the building just north of this. There is nothing different than what you're proposing as to what's built in the building north of this.
No, the one.
Yeah, like I just looked at it on street.
North of one straight over.
Right. But that, that to me is like the epitome of tiki-taki. I, I, I don't think cop, like copying and pasting this building from.
We're not. If you look at that building, if you look in the parking lot area, there are all garage doors at the first level. Secondly, it's not a ready-made building. It's a closed condition for a building.
The front facade looks exactly the same though. I mean.
No, not slightly.
Your ass is the same to me though. It's still, you know, like, sure, from an architectural standpoint, you can say, no, it's different because of these tiny characteristics that only an architect can pull out that's different.
It's a bonus to me.
Yeah.
So this is the one that we have the photo of?
Well, it's because it's the same. No, I, well, yes and no. It's the same.
Yep.
It does.
As you can see, this building has all triple windows. It's condo, so it's very large.
So is this rendering not? Is this rendering that you provided in the package potentially?
This isn't a render. That's a photo.
Got it.
Yeah, during the dispatch.
They just wanted to know in regards to the massing of this project.
Okay. Also, I mean, I was like, what is lies everyone gaslighting?
No, that's a photo of the building that he's.
Yeah.
It does look like a render, but this patch published it as a render.
Yeah, it looks like a render. Okay, sorry.
And we'll come in with full renders.
Yeah, so I, I, so what you're saying is you can't enclose both ends for some particular reason? There's a?
Well, we can enclose both ends if we do it, um, like an open gateway system. Because we have a security fog gate on the one, building just north of this.
Got you.
You can do that, but it has to have that airflow. And while we're able to do that, if we have, then the middle area is open.
Okay. Well, at any rate, just take a look at it, you know, it's conceptual. Uh, it, it's the fact that it is flush mounted with the edge of the building and then, um, is just open. That's, that's what's kind of striking me is not being as successful.
We can set that back at any point.
I mean, look at whatever options you can think of. Um, yeah, just the, the way it's drawn is not.
If you want to go away, we could set that back five, ten feet back.
Like I said, think about some options. It's just from, from my perspective, I thought that on the legacy building, where there's a door as you enter, the breezeway stairs is very effective and just is not effective, so.
So.
Another thing, I, I think in the other building, you know, you take the facade and it seems like there's some, there's some hierarchy, some of the pieces are moving forward, some are pushed back a little bit. You start to see kind of more patterning or variation in this. So in your other building that you did, so if you could bring some of that, we could make it not look just like continuous all the way across. Are we just saying the same thing over and over?
I think so. So what, uh, what other comments do we have?
I think one of the biggest drawbacks we have here is in regards to looking at the two D drawings.
Yeah.
They were done very quick to get in for conceptual, and everything go without full renderings. And then Jason was talking about, about the entrances, the open breezeways. You can take that all the way back five, ten feet. It would reduce two different building types with shadow well. There's a lot of fun stuff you can do with that. You can also do calculations on the area that we can enclose it. How possibly have it as small as, narrow as possible, is make sure we have the airflow for, for our food.
It's good you have Christian Hassan Toss working on the landscape.
Yes.
Architecture.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so just a couple of quick things on that. Um, obviously, we don't have a complete messy plant, so we'll wait to see how that turns out. You can just make sure to remind them uh, that we're really interested in how this parking lot, the surface parking lot is going to get screened on six. Uh, and we mentioned at the business meeting, uh, the idea of carrying the sidewalk down across that, you know, all the way to, to the end of the property so that ideally that can be extended at some point. Um, and then incorporating that into some sort of more of a bus screen for the surface lot. So, you know, that may often be a central feature, um, you know, the idea of service lots, a budding commercial street or, uh, public right ways, you know, something we try to avoid as much as possible throughout the village. So in order for a lot of that to happen, we really need it to be screened, um, completely, uh, in some way that's, that's all seasons. And then, you know, as you were mentioning, as you think about whatever happens with those end areas of the buildings, how that in the landscape plan and in the site plan connects to the different elements of the sidewalk. And this was drawn quickly, uh, but, you know, just a little more of a, an understanding of what happens in that, in that area between the back and the sidewalk and face the building, uh, on the sides of the buildings would be super helpful.
But you're saying that it's just not always a five-foot walk all the way around in every location, maybe it.
That is not what I'm saying. I mean, you know, absolutely. I would say, yes, a five-foot walk everywhere, yes, first.
No, I meant just that there's no variation on that. There's, you don't care.
I, I, yeah, I think that you're getting a different thing than what I was saying. Five-foot walk absolutely all the, all the way around. There's two areas where I'm concerned. One, the screening for the parking lot, it should be some map manner where when you're going down the street, you are not seeing a parking lot. Uh, but you don't see it, but, you know, whether that's a combination of wall, landscaping, fencing, whatever that is. And the second thing is at the ends of the building, we were just talking about these open breezeways and the way that people are gonna access these buildings, you have to contemplate, which they didn't do yet, which I get, this is a really quick sketch, how that will work, you know, what, what happens? Because right now, it's just kind of like a couple of little weird boxes in, in a green that you walk through the lawn to get to the end of the building. So that, that's, yeah.
They got, that last part they got. That was in their notes of what they're going to be doing. And misunderstood people.
Okay. Um, also, my quick comments, um, since it is the conceptual, I would say that I do like from these elevations that the scale of the materiality on the top, um, seems smaller than some of the previous ones and a mix of horizontal and vertical, um, sightings, but it's appearing to be on the, uh, upper floor of the elevations. Um, and I do as well like that there's some difference in coloring of that top floor. Uh, I think the variability of those colors on that top floor, um, can help distinguish from the previous building that we were talking about. And along those lines, I think just variability as you walk down this long, um, facade, uh, I think could help as well with the contrast from the surrounding buildings. So I, no, I think maybe the very last situation when there's the garage cellar, very more of like each, um, almost like each, uh, it was like divided into properties and there was like kind of some different coloring as you walk down the long, so it wasn't just the same red coloring, but maybe it's a little bit different as you, um, walk down that, um, front of your elevation. So instead of just all staying below one made at the top and like how those colors were differentiating and maybe think of more of that variation for the general break home.
I see. So basically, we do the end caps and then like the metal and rubber, and then do you, the feature pieces and kind of other?
Um, yeah, so just to help divide it up.
That's what I am.
Um, it could be a hopeful add to switch it up from strategy.
Yeah, there would. There would, thank you. And also, if you want the top, um, third, fourth floor, you could take your all the way up to the underside of the window sales, if you want that to be narrow or not as different now.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be nice. Just, I think more playing with those differences could help add to the.
And along those same lines, what I was saying about five foot was that, you know, this is a really long five-foot, some, you know, the walkway never changes. That if there were just some variations, maybe there's places that pull up and there's a couple stones or some kind of benches or something, that would make that experience of walking from here to there much nicer.
Yeah, but I understand all that and pushing across that.
All right, uh, what are comments or thoughts? Okay, well, I think it just made the fact that, at least I'm okay with it, I think we over all that project. And I think it's gonna turn out great. Uh, you've, uh, obviously you got some ideas from us to modify it to be a back-end official approval cycle throughout, uh, instead of just conceptual. So other questions you have for us?
Um, no. And thank you again for all the comments.
Okay, so, uh, we don't think any actions since that's conceptual. What else do we have today, Stan?
Else?
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
We would need to continue eleven forty.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Okay. Sounds good. Can I have a motion to continue eleven forty North High COA two five zero zero five oh seven until the next regular meeting? We have so many motions. And then a second? All right, you think again. Uh, all in favor? Opposed and abstentions? All right, that is, uh, continued. And anything else?
Um, just to clarify for you guys, um, the note about the pavement agreement was not in the minutes. It was just in the, in notes. And that's just on me for missing this down there.
That's okay.
What you would say. And I think they also misremembered what the agreement was.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting clarified. I mean, it was very, very specific and they just need to update the engineering plan to reflect that. I think we had them take that out of the previous jury approval, they call it, so that they wouldn't have that reflected on the, the site plan approval.
And my note was to update that to reflect the agreement to the pavement.
Perfect.
Um, I think it was just miscommunication from me to them.
That's okay. Yeah, we just need to go back to the previous approval and fix it to show barricades and that's all still intact.
Yes, so I can double clarify that. This means minutes. That is everything I have.
One small comment, and I don't know if this is the first time that this happened or I didn't notice it before that we've got these and it then had the old stuff that's been cereals received after business meeting. I always thought we got the most recent stuff on the top.
I can switch that round.
Does anybody else feel that way? I was, I'm like looking through all these things and then I realized, oh, wait, this isn't the most recent.
Yeah, the most recent on, yeah.
Cool. We're simple people. I can, I can update that to help.
I'm sorry for not realizing a photograph.
Well, I, I mean, I'm not even kidding. It's a very, I thought it was a rendering.
Questions, but yeah.
It's something about the sky lighting.
Just a great photo. Yeah, I, I'm not even spinning around, um, like, if you look at the dispatch article that was on the front page while you were out there.
And he called me and I never, I was gone.
Yes. So it, it, it cites this as the new building, like, if they thought it was a rendering.
Yeah.
So, yep, anyway.
That's why.
I didn't provide it, so I'm not sure.
I just really feel like I.
It's, it's, it looks like rendering. It must have been on rendering setting on the phone or something. Okay, uh, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? In a second? All favor? I, those wish for material, please adjourn.
I, I.